Thank you. We'll make this our 10-second warning before we begin. Welcome to our July 19, 2016 Town Council meeting. I officially call the meeting to order. We will begin with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. We will ask Councilmember Victor Peterson to lead us in the pledge, and those who are here in council chambers, we invite you to stand.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Tim Thompson of the Fountain of Life Church will now offer the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis, for having us today. And as this being a special event, I wanted to share a few words as I pray for you, and I have a gift for you and the incoming mayor. So I just want to say it's an honor for us, for me, to be here at such a commemorative event and time. And tonight, we gather here to honor a great leader, a great man, and a father to our town, the man John Lewis. Mayor Lewis and his family moved here in the 80s, when there were just 5,000 members of our community. And we've grown just a little bit since then. 230,000 souls now call Gilbert home. Mayor John Lewis has been a pillar in the community since before he came into office. And upon coming into office, he quickly became a preferred standard bearer for carrying the mantle of leadership and bringing our community together to be one of the most sought-out towns to live in, in America. Mayor Lewis, tonight, we are here, and you look out at this crowd, and you see that there are leaders, teachers, preachers, CEOs, businessmen, women, sons, daughters, there are family members, employees, and friends. All of us are uncommonly grateful to you for your loving, kind, and generous leadership. Tonight, we honor the man that you are. The Book of Proverbs says, "A righteous man, when the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; but when the wicked man rules, people groan." You have given us seven years, one month, two days, and I imagine a few hours of reasons to rejoice. And so for that, we thank you. Tonight marks the beginning of a new era for our beloved Gilbert. It's the era of innovation. Mayor Lewis, you've given us a healthy and broad base to launch from. You've walked with integrity and honesty. You leave large footprints for those of us coming behind. The benchmark of any good leader is that there are those who follow behind, walking in their footsteps. Mayor Lewis, we are here tonight because of you. And tonight, we are here because we have joined the race, the race that you led us in, in believing for a bright and better tomorrow. I have a gift for you from all of us, and I would like to present that to you tonight, if I can. Would you please come join me down here? I can't move away from this thing very quickly. This is a relay baton. And this baton, there's two of them. The first one says, "From Gilbert's exuberant community to Gilbert's excellent mayor, John Lewis." Exuberant means this: effusely and almost uninhibitedly enthusiastic, lavishly abundant, growing luxuriant and profusely, super abundant, abounding in vitality, extremely joyful and vigorous. And I have a second baton here. And so I would like to ask our incoming mayor that is going to be leading us, do we know who that is yet?
Not yet, after one agenda.
After one agenda item, we will know. But somewhere in that word, I think there was the name of the next person.
All right, we'll hand that off.
Okay. And this says, "From Mayor John Lewis to Gilbert's next leader in excellence." So we leave this baton here. So this is the picture that I would like to present tonight, is that we are an exuberant, lavishly abundant, vigorous, and extremely joyful community. We are blessed by the bounty of the Almighty, and we are grateful for the leadership of this man. We are expectant for what the future holds for our community of excellence. This is my prayer, and it comes from the book of Jeremiah. Ah, Lord God, behold, you have made the heavens and the earth by your great power and your outstretched arm. There is nothing that is too hard for you. You show loving kindness to a thousand, and you repay the iniquity of their fathers into the bosom of their children after them. The great, the mighty God, whose name is the Lord of hosts. You are great in counsel and mighty in work. Your eyes are open to all the ways of your Son, to give to everyone according to His ways and according to the fruit of His doings. You have set a sign and wonders in the land, can we say, in the land of Gilbert, and to this day, in the land of Israel and among men. You have made yourself a name, as it is this day. Tonight, O masterful builder of heaven and earth and selfishly of Gilbert, we honor you, Lord, and we thank you for giving us a righteous leader in John Lewis. We thank you for stirring his heart for the gift of leadership. He has run a race which we have considered to be good, perhaps at times imperfect and challenging and hard, but he has fought the good fight, and he did not give up. When evil came knocking at our homes, seeking to label our town with terror, Mayor Lewis linked arms to bring healing. If one family suffered, he showed us by example how we all have a role to play in helping to heal. His steady hand has allowed steady, safe, and secure growth to bubble up effortlessly. His integrity has attracted like-hearted individuals to our town, strengthening yet again our resolve to become something great. Tonight, we speak a blessing of God Almighty upon John Lewis and his family. I declare that an invoked blessing is more powerful than a pronounced curse. A curse can be broken at any moment, but an imparted blessing cannot be removed. So we bless Mayor Lewis, and we declare health and prosperity over he and his household. Prosper the work of his hands. Lead him in the path of righteousness and restore unto him the joy of your salvation and grant him peace, abundant peace, uncommon peace. Should times of trouble present themselves before him, may his strength not be sapped before the day of battle, and may his resolve be stronger than ever. May his victories be swift. God bless our beloved mayor, Mayor Lewis. Amen. Once Jeremiah finished praying, he said, "Oh, Lord God, is there anything too difficult for you?" And behold, the word of the Lord came and said, "Behold, I am the God of all flesh; there is nothing too hard for me." And so we all say together, "There is nothing too hard for God." Thank you, Mayor Lewis.
Our town clerk will now conduct the roll call, please.
Mayor John Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jared Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Jen Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. We have been given a list of individuals. Some are still on their way here, but some of our great regional leaders that we appreciate. And as I say your name, if you are in the council chambers, please stand and be recognized, and I'll, we've got 20 names, and at the end of the, I should say, at the end of the 20 names, we'll have the applause for all who are here. First, representing U.S. Congress, Matt Salmon's office, Chuck Gray, from one of our county supervisors, Steve Chukri, county supervisor Denny Barney, Mayor John Giles from Mesa, Mayor Gail Barney from Queen Creek, Mayor Jim Lane from Scottsdale, Mayor Mark Mitchell from Tempe, Vice Mayor Jack Sellers from Chandler, Councilmember from Chandler, Kevin Harkey, Councilmember from Chandler, Terry Rowe, from the Chandler School District, the Chandler School District Superintendent, Camille Castile, from the Chandler School District, our president and board member, Annette Oxier, the Chandler School District Board Vice President, Barb Mosden, and the Chandler School District Board Member, Bob Rice, Public Information Officer from Apache Junction, Al Bravo, from GPEC, our president and CEO, Chris Camacho, the executive director of the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport, Brian O'Neil. And that was the list I was given. Did you, I wasn't paying attention. Did the group stand?
They did.
All right. A big round of applause for those names who I just read. Of course, Dr. Thomason from Higley Unified School District, and Dr. Kishimoto from Gilbert Unified School District, if you could also stand and be recognized. Did I miss anyone else? I think everyone who is here I want to recognize, but thank you. The next item on the agenda, let's see, should we just skip this one? No, that was one. I'm going to go to five, just for fun. Agenda item number five is under the consent calendar, and this is related to a grant with our wonderful partner from the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community. And at this point, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve item number five.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second, please vote. Thank you. That's approved with a seven vote. Now we go to this agenda item. I'm wondering, maybe I'll just sneak in quickly. Many of you have heard of East Valley Partnership. I have some team members here. If you could please stand, like in Carolyn Rock, and be recognized, and there's a brief explanation, and I'm going to turn this right to Vice Mayor Taylor. Wonderful, one of our great East Valley community leaders, Rock Arnett, retired as the president CEO, and there was an opportunity to apply for that position. I was not quick to apply for that, but I finally did, and I was asked to consider replacing Rock, which is not something that can be done. But at the same time, a wonderful opportunity to meet, to work with Mike and Carol, and Megan and Chelsea, and other team members, and the 120 organizations that are part of these Valley Partnership. And so with that assignment, there was a request that instead of two weeks' notice, at the end of December, is it possible to give six months' notice? And they agreed to do so. The benefit to our community was that meant that we did not need to have a special election, that by having this event take place in July, we would be close enough to the election so that we would not need to do anything but turn to the council to ask the council to consider having someone serve out the last six months of Mayor Lewis's term in preparation for a mayor who would be elected in August to then begin officially that term in January. And so I'm going to leave the dais and turn to Vice Mayor Taylor to ask you to now continue on with agenda items on this council agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And with that, for the benefit of the public, we'll have two items here relative to number one. Number, I will mention that we, the council has a copy of the letter that was submitted by Mayor Lewis to the town clerk, and for the benefit of the public, it effectively has his resignation just after 5 o'clock today relative to this agenda item. And Gilbert Town Ordinance has the vice mayor act in the duties in the absence of a mayor. And so with that, we'll move straight to item number one, which is for discussion and vote on the acceptance of the resignation of the office of mayor and declaring the office vacant. Councilmember Ray.
I don't see any motion, so it looks like it's died. And we invite Mayor Lewis back up.
We can just throw these away.
No, I move that we vote on the acceptance of the resignation, accepting the resignation of the office of the mayor and declaring that office vacant.
Okay, thank you. Second. With the motion and a second, is there any further discussion from the council? Councilmember Cook.
I would like to have some discussion.
Please. Can I have you here? It has been a great pleasure and honor to serve with you. When I had the privilege of meeting Mayor Lewis John back in 2008, when you were running, that really was kind of the beginning of even my involvement in understanding a little about our community. But since then, we have had, and the public probably doesn't know a lot about this, but many times when we get together, it really is to talk about our faith and our service based upon who we are as individuals. Both John and I come and serve in two different faith communities. And the one thing that has been of great joy has been the many hours that we have had discussing our faith and the importance of our faith as it relates to the privilege of serving our community. And if I could say one thing that I will miss in this capacity, but I look forward to continuing those conversations, are those precious moments that you and I have shared in talking about our faith and how we serve our community through service. Anyways, my lovely wife has an internet company, BlessingPillow.com. And usually, how I like to describe this, her business with her best friends, is that they make a pillow for very, very special occasions. And sometimes, they make pillows for individuals that are suffering in painful situations. And she is a poet, and she is a writer. And on behalf of the Cook family, we have this very special pillow in the colors of your most favorite, favorite baseball team, the San Francisco Giants. And on behalf, as you can see, I am honoring you with that, with the tie and the hat. I know our town manager is probably about ready to, you know, throw things at us here, but that's all right, because it's not your turn. But anyways, this pillow has many, many wonderful things that's really about you and what you've done. But what I like to do is read this poem, if you don't mind. To Mayor Lewis from the Cooks. "I am your special blessing pillow. I was made with lots of love and care. Each stitch around my pillowcase was sewn with love and prayer. The fabric I am made of was picked with you in mind. My cuff honors your San Francisco Giants, a better team you cannot find. It may be another great day in Gilbert, but today brings sadness too, as we gather as a council to say farewell to you. You've been a strong, yet gentle presence. The town of Gilbert has been blessed. To have you serve us as our mayor, you'll be remembered as the best. With the gift of hospitality, you make everyone you meet feel welcomed and important. With a hug you always greet. You've taught so many lessons. Feedback is a gift, so true. Welcoming diversity, staying the course till the work is through. I'm the perfect size for travel, so take me where you may go. When visiting kids out of state, be sure I'm in tow. Please use me to relax on at the end of a long day. When watching basketball or baseball, close by you, I can stay. You can punch me when you're angry. When you're worried, hug me tight. Sleep on me when you're tired. I'll be your comfort through the night. Just remember every time you rest your head on me that you're a precious child of God and love for eternity." Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Cook. Any additional discussion? Councilmember Peterson.
Following Councilmember Cook is a difficult thing to do. I'm not nearly the showman that he is, and thank you for those tender and kind words. I think we can all relate to them, and we appreciate them. I just want to say how truly grateful I am for my time here on the council with Mayor Lewis. He has been all the things that Eddie talked about. As I thought about, I don't have an officially prepared speech, but I was thinking about all the great qualities that Mayor Lewis had. I started making a list, and I just wanted to share a few of those with you. Again, I know there's lots of people that want to speak, so I'll try and keep it brief. The first thing that came to mind was how generous he is, and in particular, how generous with his time he is. I can't think of a single time, unless he was like triple booked, that I asked for his presence at something that he turned me down. Never. He's always there when you ask. And he's a busy guy, so that means a lot, that he's generous with his time. He's friendly. I've never seen him be unfriendly. He's considerate. He's always thinking of everyone, very sensitive to others' thoughts and feelings. He's inclusive. He makes everyone feel important. Have you noticed that? Here he is, the mayor of Gilbert, and he'll make you feel as important as he is. He's very cheerful, always cheerful. He's optimistic. He's responsive. I hear this all the time. People tell me that Mayor Lewis always responds when asked a question or asked for help. He's sincerely caring, as I said. He cares about those around him. He's creative. Have you seen him run a meeting? Have you seen him run? You should have seen our, we do have digital state of the town now, which is great, but you should have seen the creativity come out of Mayor Lewis when we had our state of the town here, and he was hosting. Amazing. He's hardworking. Nobody can outwork Mayor Lewis. I will bet you that. He's enthusiastic. He's flexible, again, considering all views. And I want to, I want to end with one that I think may be the thing I appreciate the most in Mayor Lewis, and that is he's forgiving. You know, I heard Eddie talk about how we're people of faith. We are passionate. There's, there's a lot of belief and passion for those beliefs on this council. There's plenty of that here. And with that, it's challenging to know how to, to stick with what you believe, because sometimes you find that you disagree with others, and not maybe so much in those core beliefs, but how you interpret and apply those beliefs to a specific case. That's where the challenge lies. And it's challenging to know how to disagree without being disagreeable. I wish I was nearly as good at it as Mayor Lewis is, but with all my faults and the times that I don't do that very well, he's forgiving. And I know that I have a true friend in Mayor Lewis, and I'm grateful for that. I, I know that there can be some misunderstandings, and I know the media likes to hype things up and, and create division, but I want to state once and for all, Mayor Lewis is my friend and somebody I value and I care about, and I am grateful for his service to our community. And so, Mayor, thank you. Thank you for all you've done for us and the friend that you've been to everyone.
Further discussion?
It's all been said. I echo the same thing and say thank you to Mayor Lewis, and thank you to Lysinda for giving us mayor for the last seven years and some changes. As Tim reminded us, it's been a privilege to serve alongside mayor, and the fact that there's this many people in the audience tells us that either Mayor Lewis is resigning or we're going to talk about cats in the riparian reserve. So, Mayor, thank you for your service. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray.
I will keep this very short, because I know I'm having a difficult time talking this evening. Mayor Lewis, the past 18 months have been incredible under your leadership. I appreciate the fact that you lead by example and that you teach people to not only read leadership books, but to write their own, chapter by chapter. And I've now heard you say that to a couple of groups recently, and thank you for that. Thank you to your wonderful family for letting us have you as a town mayor for as long as they did. I wish you could be here to finish out your term with us, but I look forward to the work that we will all do together in the East Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. And I'll just add as well, thank you, Mayor Lewis. And also, can we give a huge, big round of applause to his support team right there in his right and his left, Lysinda Lewis. Excellent, thank you. And Kelvin Lewis, they're here to represent the family, because behind them, that is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So with a motion and a second, if there's no further discussion, let's vote. Motion carries with a 6-0 vote. Let's move to item number two, which is Discussion, Voting, Selection of a Councilmember to Fill the Vacant Mayor Seat with a Term Ending January 2017. Councilmember Cook.
Vice Mayor Taylor. It would be a great privilege and honor to nominate Councilmember Daniels to serve as the interim mayor for the town of Gilbert, to be term-ending in January 2017.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Vice Mayor.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion?
I would just like to say thank you, first of all. And I will be abstaining from this vote, because I do have an interest in the outcome, as you might imagine. So it's not because I don't want to vote, but because I realize I have a legal responsibility to abstain at this time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Daniels. Councilmember Peterson.
Do we now move to appoint, rather than just nominate? Sorry, I want to make sure we get this right.
Councilman Cook, could you repeat your motion, please?
Well, I made the nomination.
Yep.
Maybe I was to say I'd like to nominate and appoint Councilmember Daniels to serve as the mayor for the town of Gilbert with a term ending in January 2017.
Councilman Peterson, Mr. Vice Mayor, it can be done that way, but the Vice Mayor needs to give an opportunity for any other nominations.
Okay. Before we do that, can we just make sure the second is aligned with that initial motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any further nominations from the dais? Any further nominations? Hearing none, seeing none? Is there any further discussion? Then let's vote. That carries with a five yeas, no nays, one abstain. Congratulations. We will invite Councilmember Daniels to the front here, and also invite Presiding Judge John Hudson, as we move to Agenda Item Number Three, to administer the oath of office to the newly-selected mayor.
All right.
Sorry, Steph.
You raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jen Daniels.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
Office of mayor.
The office of mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you, Judge. I'm not sure I thought about what happened after that. It is now a privilege for us to recognize Mayor Lewis in many ways for the next few minutes, and you've heard some remarkable words thus far. It probably still doesn't do him justice, and I think we're all trying really hard to find the right words to compliment all the wonderful leadership that he's provided to the town. But we do have a video that we'd like to play that our great Gilbert Digital team has put together. So we'll start with that.
Hi, I'm Gilbert Mayor John Lewis.
I'm Mayor John Lewis.
I am today's host, Gilbert Mayor John Lewis.
I am Mayor John Lewis from the clean, safe, vibrant community of Gilbert, Arizona. Come on in.
We're grateful to be here today on this grand opening. It's kind of fun to dream the impossible. It's a very special part of the community for first responders to be right here, our first-class, first responders, who we remember our heroes. This is the vibrancy of the community. This is where our community comes together. Wow, what a great place to live. You've seen how much we can accomplish working together. Hey, what do you think of this new playground?
I think that it was a lot of fun stuff today.
How are you today? I love it. Doesn't get any better than this. What do you see happening in Gilbert?
We used to call him Tom Terrific, but that wasn't very terrific.
No, that's a little bit low.
Maybe a bit low.
Can we give him a little bit higher?
In this manager's update, the mayor is taking the lead.
So as we were saying, the business walk, this is really tough. We're having a hard time just enjoying this. Remember, when you reach for your wallet, think Gilbert. This is still the place that we all call home. What is your Gilbert legacy? This is Gilbert.
Hi, we're Gilbert Digital.
Mayor Lewis, we are sad. Our YouTube channel won't be the same without you. Thank you for all of the fun.
Mayor, that video made it look like all you've had for the last seven years was fun. I know there's been a lot of hard work mixed in with that, too. At this time, there will be some presentations of gifts, and we'd like to invite Chief Joe Bush to come down and present the first gift. And he will be followed by our town manager, Manager Patrick Baner.
Mayor Lewis, I want to thank you on behalf of all the members of Gilbert Fire and Rescue for your years of service to Gilbert. You've been so supportive of our activities, not only what we do on a daily basis to respond to the needs of the citizens. You supported our initiatives, our programs, and you've participated often in our community events as well. And cooking pancakes, for instance, we've done that a couple of times, and those are great memories for us. And speaking for all the members of the department, we appreciate all that you've done for us. And for those people that offer us special support and provide significant support to what we do and to the community, we like to recognize them with a token of fire service. And if you'd come up, I'd like to give you that right now. It's a beach bag. You get to keep the bag. I'll keep the paper. But for all your support and all that you've done, we want to offer you this, your very own firefighting helmet.
Mayor Lewis.
Mayor Lewis. The room here tonight is filled with a lot of people to wish you well in your new career and your new endeavor, and thank you for your service to our community. Seven years is a long time, and we all know the commitment and the hours you put in. On behalf of the 1,300 employees here in Gilbert, Arizona, I'm here to balance out that well wishes with some different messages tonight. But our town attorney, Mike Hamblin, reminded me this is not a roast, so that eliminates about 95% of what I was going to say. So we do have a few tokens of our appreciation for your service to our community, one from me personally, and then one from the executive team. I'm going to start with the one from me. This took a lot of doing, and I had to call in a lot of favors to get this pulled off. But, and I didn't know if I was going to be able to do it, but on behalf of the St. Louis Cardinals, the greatest baseball team in the country.
I'll probably wear it whenever I do yard work.
So for those of you who couldn't hear that, he said, "I'll probably wear it when I do yard work." When I came in with it this morning, Debbie Dana, who is our incredible admin assistant up in my office, asked me. She goes, "That's really nice. Did you buy that for the mayor?" I'm like, "Yeah, but I got it on eBay used." He's not going to wear it, and I'm not going to spend a lot of money on a jersey he's not going to wear, so... But I hope you wear that with pride, Mayor. Next, from our executive team. We all pitched in to get this for you, something to remind you of your service and your time here with the community, and we sincerely appreciate everything you did for us and all the support you gave us through the years. Please do. You just pull all the room.
Patrick, would it be okay if we invited the executive team down for a group photo? I think that'd be great. You guys wouldn't mind all coming down?
All the members of the executive team that are here tonight, come down. So what we got for Mayor Lewis, we put a saying on the top of it, "Feedback is like the gift," and that's what the mayor always reminded us through the years, as we get feedback in the performance of our duties and we hear from citizens who are happy and displeased both with our service, their feedback to us is a gift so that we can enhance our performance and the service we deliver to our residents. So we engraved that on the top of the box. But then we had heard that there was a retired mayor in this region who had a mayor's ring with the seal of the city that he served mayor as, his name and his years of service. So we got you something similar, so you could remember your time as our mayor and just a small token of our gratitude for everything you did for us.
At this time, we do have a presentation from the council on behalf of all of the town employees and the residents of Gilbert. But before we start that, if you guys want to go ahead and start walking down, I did see a few others walk in today, and we want to make sure they are recognized. We have Mayor Jim Lane from Scottsdale here. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind standing, we'd like to recognize you. We saw Supervisor Steve Shukri, also represents the corner of Gilbert. Dennis Smith, I saw Dennis in the back, the executive director of MAGA Regional Council. Yes, thank you. And then I saw Buchanan Davis walk in as well. Buchanan is a representative of Senator Flake's office. Oh, he's over there in the corner. Thanks, Buchanan.
Okay, so I'm happy to lead off this Resolution Number 3865. And let me just read this here. "The Resolution of the Common Council of the Town of Gilbert, Honoring Mayor John Lewis for His Service to the Citizens of Gilbert During His Term of Office, Whereas John Lewis Has Served as Mayor Since June 16, 2009, and..."
"Whereas John Lewis has served with honor and distinction throughout his tenure, and whereas his influence has always been exercised with the utmost concern that the cares and concerns of stakeholders were carefully considered before a decision was reached, and..."
"Whereas John Lewis served as council liaison to numerous regional boards and commissions, acting as an advocate for the town of Gilbert, and..."
"Whereas he has been instrumental in leading the town of Gilbert to multiple credit rate increases culminating in a AAA general obligation bond rating by Moody's and a AAA revenue bond rating by Standard &amp; Poor's, and..."
"And whereas John Lewis has been an advocate for economic development in the town of Gilbert, leading to the creation of the Rivellon Business Park, which will contain 3,100 square feet of Class A office space, effectively doubling the amount of office space in the town of Gilbert, and..."
"Whereas he has carried out the duties of public office, honoring the public trust and representing the citizens of Gilbert with integrity and courageous leadership. Now therefore be it resolved that all of us, the town council, on behalf of the citizens of Gilbert, hereby express sincere appreciation to John Lewis for his service to the town as mayor." Mayor Lewis, please join us. We have a couple of gifts for you, Mayor, and council's going to help us grab those. If you wouldn't mind helping. Now, at this point, the first gift sort of seems, oh, the smaller one may be first, yeah. That one sort of seems like we're trying to tell you something at this point, or not. It was a gift from the heart. And you may have already gotten one or two of these from other organizations over the last couple of days, but I guarantee you that was not, we did not collaborate with them to provide this gift to you. So, without further ado, Mayor, we do have a beautiful clock for you. And at this point, Mayor, it might be easiest to have you travel. This other gift is quite large, and I hope Lucinda's okay with it. We maybe should have cleared this first, but we're excited to present this to you as well. I think we get to pass the mic to him now. I understand he wants to actually say something, so we'll pass the mic. Thank you.
Kurt, please, and there's great symbolism. Gilbert was incorporated as a town in 1920. The very first expenditure that our local citizens of just a few hundred people decided to make was to build a water tower. And so, that water tower from 1920 has had great significance of building for the future. Now, I was told, as far as expectations for this gathering, that it would be short, quick, to the point, and I was to also be short and quick. And that's not like me, is it? All right, we'll see what I can do. Ten parting thoughts, and the first one, I'm going to have to add a 10 thank you, and this is because fellow mayors and council members and regional leaders, I didn't realize we were doing invitations outside of Gilbert, and I thank you. And I could elaborate, make a lot of comments about that, but we've been together in a lot of meetings, and regional thinking or state thinking has been one of the highlights of serving as mayor, and thank you. The other item I'm going to do in addition to 10 thank yous by adding that one is some predictions for the future, and so here goes. The first thank you, Gilbert has over 80,000 families, and I wish, as part of parting thoughts, to thank those families. These families come in all different sizes and shapes, some large, some small. Many of the families are one person. Many of the families are one parent. I just decided to randomly, just randomly, pick one family and thank that family. That mom in the bottom left, she is a cute lady. We have developed, so many of us, a community that focuses on family and a family-friendly environment, and I thank you for that. A second thank you, the very first week as mayor, many faith group leaders came forward and said, "How can we help?" With great energy, even the energy that you saw with the invocation tonight with Pastor Tim, I wanted to thank our faith group leaders, and I could have put pictures of over 100 different churches. And within a few months of some of the volunteer activities that took place in the summer of 2009, we applied to the Arizona Air Faith Movement, and we were given a special recognition of being a golden rural city. This particular proclamation hangs in the mayor's office, and it's one of the great recognitions, proud recognitions of our community, to our wonderful faith groups and the volunteerism that they provide, and how they are a key part of our community. Even all the way back to 1920, our first mayor was key in having our local faith groups help when there was really no money to do different things. And all the way from the beginning until now, we thank our faith groups. A third thank you, this is a community of freedom, and we love our freedom. We love our flag, we love fireworks, we love something that is one of my favorite activities in our community, the Operation Welcome Home. When we hear and find someone who has served abroad comes home in the council chambers, we welcome them home. And we do it in this picture at the bottom with flags, with a limousine bringing them into the front doors, and it's a great celebration. And those who are involved with that, I thank you. To our Veterans Day, Memorial Day, to Flag Days, to anything that we can recognize our veterans, and one of the greatest recognitions that I appreciate in our community is when we were noted as being one of the best places for veterans to call home. And so, I'm grateful for this community and Constitution Fairs, and now that we are underway with our Welcome Home Veterans Park, this community of freedom, and I even go to that top left-hand corner picture on display in the foyer, is the Freedom Award that was given to Gilbert in 2011, and I was given the assignment to go back to Washington DC and receive that award on behalf of Gilbert. Firefighter Leo Hess was the one that put in the application, he's in that picture, and part of the excitement that night was, he was on his third deployment in Afghanistan, and they flew him to Washington DC to be part of the event, and he was the one individual that night to receive a loud, longstanding ovation. And to Leo Hess and others that are part of this community of freedom, I thank you for that. A fourth thank you, and we have some more education leaders here. The Lewis family is an example of a family that came to Gilbert because of premier education, and we knew it would be a great place to raise a family. To our teachers have heard me say in the council chambers at another great favorite event, our Citizen of the Month Community Award, the greatest and noblest calling of all is that of teaching. And to our teachers, school administrators, to our parents who are active in building the education community, thank you. Our education community has provided us with a workforce that is well-known in the state of Arizona, a workforce that is well-educated. And so, to our community of business and economic development leaders, thank you for building a thriving community, from small to medium to large businesses, to brand-new businesses who have put great risk to start a business. I love going to ribbon cuttings. I love being with our business leaders, and I love our economic development leaders that have great vision and help us create jobs, and together as a community, we thank those great business leaders. There have been many occasions to have ribbon cuttings, to participate with our business leaders as they have joined in activities, and we thank them for that. A sixth thank you, we are a community of engaged citizens, and there are probably 1,000 pictures that could describe this, but the volunteerism through our four city, on our Make a Difference days, and when you ask Chief Dorn, our police chief Dorn, the recognition of being the second safest city in the United States with a relatively small police force, how does that happen? He is quick to thank our citizens, that we have a group of citizens that get to know their neighbors, that if they see something that's not quite right, they call and do something about it. To our engaged citizens who helped us in 2009 with that tough question of how do we balance a budget, we had over 100 citizens that were part of the Citizen Budget Committee, and there's example after example. I also thank our engaged citizens, one of my favorite places to go in Gilbert is our Gilbert Historical Society, where you can learn from the past but envision the future, and the list goes on and on. I thank our community of engaged citizens. I thank our Gilbert town staff, and for a minute, I slightly shift an emotion as I think of our town staff, there was a memory that came. As I started mayor, every department, every group I had a chance to meet with, the hardest group to spend time with or to attend a team meeting or department meeting was our police department, and that's because they are out and about. And so, one lieutenant was assigned to me. We did ride longs, we spent a lot of time together, we went where we could to meet members of the police department. On Thursday night, January 28, 2010, Town Manager George Pettit called to let me know that Lieutenant Eric Schuhhandler had been killed in the line of duty. 16 years of service to Gilbert, father, a devoted father of two daughters, had been This was tough, and the next days ahead were challenging for our community. It was a time of uniting and coming together. The Saturday following that tragic news, I did find myself in front of our Public Safety Memorial across the street, and where I'm typically one to keep emotions in, it was the one time that tears flowed, and it made me have a great appreciation at that point for what I had seen in our community after six months, our dedicated town employees. And as our local Arizona Republic cartoonist, Steve Benson, drew this picture, I made a commitment to myself that whenever I could, to our dedicated town staff, that I would do my best to thank you. The term lean describes a group of town staff that provide quality service at the lowest cost to the taxpayers, and so part of tonight, I wanted to thank you, our dedicated staff, many who put their lives on the line, and then the rest are supporting those who are doing so. It's a great team. The second thing, the number eight thank you, excuse me, is to our town council, and to those who have given comments tonight, I thank you again. This is a picture since 2009 of the four different councils that I have had the opportunity to be part of. 12 different individuals, all 12 could receive from me a long list of specifics of how I've appreciated you. And to all in this room, thank you. You each have special talents, you each have taken the time to dedicate part of your life to serving our community, and I thank you for that. And number nine thank you to town leadership. Now, I'm trying not to really mention any names in this, to be very general. There are three names, though, that represent our town leadership. I have appreciated serving with Town Manager George Pettit, Colin Duett, and Patrick Banger. Patrick, Lucinda has called you a saint and a Lewis. She's called you a saint for five years of Lewis, did you call it tyrant or tyranny? It's got a lot of adjectives. Maybe there has been an obnoxious mayor, but there's been an obnoxious manager there too. And we all love the Diamondbacks, we all love the Diamondbacks. Mayor Lane, as you know, we have special allegiance and alliance with the Giants with coming to spring training, but this has been a long time in my life, and so I'm just grateful, and Victor, you're going to appreciate this, that we let the market decide, and so I simply say hashtag even years. I'll just leave it at that. Predictions for the future. Now, keeping with baseball, Yogi Berra said, "A guy ought to be careful about making predictions, especially about the future." Remember I showed that one family, just a random family in Gilbert? Sometimes families get bigger, and grad kids come. And so, the prediction I make with great confidence is corn and pecans in Gilbert. 1891 is when farmers first came to Gilbert. We are a farming community, and yes, we've gone from the hay capital of the world to the satellite and algae and cancer fighting and cardiovascular and non-controversial stem cell research community. But we're still a farming community, and a farmer would say this, plant your corn for yourself and pecans for your grandchildren. And so, the prediction I make to interpret that is our town will continue to serve and find ways to meet needs today. The corn, and we will continue to prepare for the future for the grandchildren that will eat those pecans that will plant and not have the benefit of eating for many years. More predictions, feedback will continue to be like a gift. That's a prediction, and it will be said many, many times in the future, this is another great day in Gilbert, including July 19, 2016. And how will this happen? In Gilbert, it's the power of we. Someone said, and it could have been me, what we do, we do together. We do it as a community of families and faith groups and freedom-loving citizens and our community of premier education and our community of visionary business and economic development leaders and our community of engaged citizens and dedicated town staff and council and leaders because in Gilbert, the power of we. So, my prediction of the future is there will be many, many days where we will say, "This is another great day in Gilbert because hashtag this is Gilbert." Mayor Daniels, if Kate could be given to either Bridget or to Victor or Dad, and just The ceremonial moment of someone that we have served together since 2009, someone that I have greatly appreciated for her ability to articulate and to help me and to serve faithfully, and her willingness to say, "I will continue to serve." With the vote of the council tonight, I am pleased to hand over gavel to Mayor Jen Daniels. And let's hear a few words from Mayor Daniels.
He really is one of the greatest leaders, and I learned a long time ago that there's absolutely no crying in politics, but he's my friend and someone the Daniels family has come to really appreciate as an extra family member. And I, when I ran for council in 2009, I did not know Mayor Lewis, he was running for mayor the first time, and so we've only served together. I actually don't really know how to do this without him, but I guess we'll find out real fast. fast if I've learned anything in the last seven years. But I sure have appreciated his influence in my life. And I'll tell you just a very brief story. I know I'm standing between you and cake and a reception. But when I knew Mayor Lewis was probably the finest man that I'd ever had the chance to work with was early in 2009, excuse me, that fall of 2009. My oldest son was going to kindergarten for the first time, and I'd just been elected to council. And we'd spent a little bit of time with Mayor Lewis up until that point. Not a lot, but my kids had met him and knew who he was, and were very excited about knowing the mayor of the town of Gilbert. And I picked up my oldest from his first day of kindergarten. I said, how was it? And he said, it was great, but I need your phone. And I said, well, what do you need my phone for? And he said, I promised Mayor Lewis I would call him on my first day of school and tell him how my first day went, because he wanted to know. So sure enough, I handed over the phone, and there proceeded to be a sweet conversation about being courageous and going back to school the next day. But I realized very quickly at that time that what made Mayor Lewis the tremendous leader that he is and why we've all come to know, love, and appreciate him is because he makes each person feel like they are the most important citizen of Gilbert, even if they don't live in Gilbert. He incorporates them into the family and makes them feel like they really, truly are the most important person in his world. I can only imagine the sacrifice of Lucinda and at least the three that were at home when he started his mayorship, which was Jenny Ed and Kelvin. I'm sure they spent hours doing homework without him and probably had to practice piano, but I know he always put his family first. And without their support, he wouldn't have been nearly the mayor that he is. And it is not lost on me that these are giant shoes to fill. I am well aware, and believe me, if I could strap him to that mayor's chair for the next, at least six months, maybe four years and six months, I absolutely would. Because he really has been the finest man that I've ever had the opportunity to work with. So Mayor Lewis, thank you again for all that you've done. There are great things to look forward to in Gilbert, and we need all of you to be able to make that happen. So thank you for all of your efforts up until this point. May they continue as we look forward to more great days in Gilbert. So thank you.
It's item 3A of the addendum that was provided. And we look to legal counsel to give us a brief update and perhaps a presentation, brief presentation on this item.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Daniels and members of the council. There, with the, with your selection as mayor, there is now a vacancy in the office of town, of a town council member to serve the remainder of your term. That, that it is proposed by staff that that vacancy be filled by the process by which I'm about to suggest and relay, which will be soon be published on town website. Staff proposes that persons, qualified electors, and that means persons of voting age who can, who have lived in the town for one year, desiring to serve the balance of the now-vacated council term of Mayor Jen Daniels, shall submit an application to the town clerk by electronic means by 6:00 PM on Tuesday, August 2nd, consisting of a one-page resume and a statement of interest in the position of no more than 250 words. And that, and again, that deadline would be close of business 6:00 PM on Tuesday, August 2nd. On Tuesday, August 9th, at 6:00 PM, there will be a special meeting where the council will select the three candidates of, or the three applicants of all those who applied who the council desires to interview. This will be in an open meeting. On Thursday, August 11th, at 5:00 PM, those three candidates will be interviewed, and there will be a vote wherein a new council person will be selected. And then on Thursday, August 18th, at 7:00 PM at the regular council meeting, that new council member will be sworn in and participate. That is the process that staff proposes.
Thank you. Is there any comment, suggestions, or motions from our council?
Mike, as it relates to the candidates, we do have, would this be open to all individuals, including the current individuals that are running for council that are in this election cycle?
The council, Mayor Daniels and Council Member Cook and other members of the council. The council is free to choose whomever they, whomever they desire. If the council wishes to limit applicants to those who are currently not running to, for a council seat in the upcoming election, it may do so. It may also choose to not so limit. And that's a decision the council needs to make. By law, the, well, you have to be a qualified elector to serve on the council. But the council can set up any fair process it desires as to who it wishes to consider or not consider for purposes of fulfilling the council vacancy or the remainder of now Mayor Daniels' term.
Thank you, Mike. I might suggest that whatever motion is proposed, that you mention how you'd like to proceed with that particular item as you make the motion. Victor, are you ready, or do you have comments?
I just wanted to comment on Council Member Cook's question. And first of all, I just want to say I'm open to either direction. I think if we keep it open to all qualified, you know, electors, that's fine, because that just keeps our options open. If, if whatever decision ends up being made in the end includes the factor of whether or not we want to, you know, appoint someone who's a candidate and therefore potentially at least have some impact on an election, and people have that concern, we can, we can make that decision. So keeping it open is fine. So I'm open to that. But I also feel that it may be wise, I know that it's not a legal issue, but it may be wise to, to not have any feel that we're impacting the, the outcome of an election by choosing among a competitive race field of candidates, so as it were. So I would suggest it might be best to go ahead and open it up to anyone who's a qualified elector that's not currently a candidate for that office. But again, I'm open to either one. I think leaving it open still gives us that ability to individually decide that we may not vote for those individuals if we're concerned of that issue.
Mayor Daniels. I, that's weird. I'm ready to make a motion. If the, if the council's ready, I'm ready for most, to make a motion.
Let's go.
Mayor, I motion that we approve the schedule as presented by the town attorney and that we follow Council Member Peterson's comments that, that the field of candidates that we accept applications from does not include those who are currently running for the open seats.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Is there additional discussion? All right, let's vote. That passes with a 6-0 vote. I believe that concludes the business of our agenda today. There is a reception in the lobby and more comments to be made. I did see Mayor Greg Stanton from the city of Phoenix here, our biggest neighbor, so welcome. We're grateful that you're here as well, and I know there'll be more too. Thank you. Please join us in the lobby for a celebration of Mayor Lewis. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.